By the authority vested in me, I hereby declare this meeting of the Conshawken Borough Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that may come before it. We have roll call.
Councilmember Tuttino? Councilmember Tutt- thank you. Councilmember Griffin?
Here.
Councilmember Flanagan?
Here.
Councilmember Barton?
Here.
Councilmember Stokely?
Here.
Vice President Sokolowski?
Here.
President Leonard?
Here.
Mayor Aronson?
Here.
Thank you, Brittany. Thank you for joining us for our regularly scheduled public work session via video conference under a conference call. At this time, I would ask that all participants mute their audio lines. No public comments will be permitted during the course of the meeting until the designated public comment section located on the agenda. You will be notified during the meeting when public comments are permitted. You may also submit comments and write written comments via email to brogers@conshawkenpa.gov. A member of the borough administration during the public comment period will read public comments submitted in this manner. For all comments, please include your name and address for the record. It is of the utmost importance that the public is given every available opportunity to participate in the meeting. However, if required, we will mute all audio lines due to any inappropriate comments or behavior during the remote meeting. Borough Council and administration thank you in advance for your cooperation during the remote meeting. We hope that everyone in our community is staying safe and healthy. The first item on our agenda is land use matters, public hearing, and ordinances. The first item is conditional use hearing for 541 East Hector Street, Kraft Custom Homes applicant, Mr. Peters.
Thank you, President Leonard. And if I could ask, is the court reporter on the line?
Yes, Mr. Peters, don't care.
Thank you very much. If we could please go on the record at this time. This is the scheduled date and time for the public hearing on conditional use hearing Z dash 2020 dash 07. The petitioner is Kraft Custom Homes LLC. The property is 541 East Hector Street. The petitioner is requesting conditional use approval in accordance with Section 27 dash 1903 dash B dot 11 of the Conshawken zoning ordinance to allow for a building up to 40 feet in height. At this time, I'll ask whether there is anyone interested in this application on the line. I do see Mr. Majid, and I'm sorry if I'm saying your name wrong. I do see that he is on the line. There were two entries of appearance entered. In addition to Mr. Majid, there was a Mr. Rodney Glose. Is Mr. Glose on the line? Okay. Mr. Majid, if you could, and Brett, is he able to unmute himself?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Majid, if you could, are you here this evening to participate actively in the hearing or just to monitor the hearing, please?
Participate as needed.
Okay. Is it your desire to become a party to the hearing? And what that means is that you will be able to ask questions of the applicant's witnesses. It also would give you the right after the hearing, should you be dissatisfied with the result, to file an appeal. Is it your desire to be a party?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Hughes, any objections?
No.
And Mr. Majid, for the record, I believe your property is next door to the subject property. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Back end, 540, 40th Street.
With that, is there anyone else on the line that wishes to participate in this hearing either as a party or to make a comment? Let the record reflect that there is no response. With that, I will introduce a few borough exhibits, and then we will turn it over to Mr. Hughes to present the testimony of his witnesses. Exhibit B1 is the application for conditional use. Exhibit B2 is the deed for the property dated June 27, 2019, transferring the property to this applicant. Exhibit B3 is the proof of publication. This matter was advertised in the Times Herald on August 17, 2020, and August 24, 2020. Exhibit B4 are the entries of appearance. Again, there are two, Mr. Glose and Mr. Majid, the latter of whom is now a party. Exhibit B5 is the planning commission report dated August 13, 2020. Before I turn it over to Mr. Hughes, I'll note for the record that it is the intention, although it is at Borough Council's discretion, what they do at the end of the hearing, but it is my expectation that no vote will be taken this evening. Therefore, this matter on the record would be continued to September 16, 2020 at 7:00 PM. That meeting would again be a hybrid meeting, so there will be members of Borough Council present here at 400 Fayette Street, Conshawken, Pennsylvania, in Borough Chambers. There will also be for the public an opportunity to participate remotely. And for the record, to participate remotely, that information will be found at conshawkenpa.gov at a later date. With that, Mr. Hughes, I turn it over to you to identify your witnesses and present testimony.
Good evening. Ed Hughes, I represent the applicant, Kraft Custom Homes. I have two witnesses, Ryan Allezaki, who's here with me, and Nick Vastardis, who I believe is on remote. So I want them to be sworn in, I think.
Yes, please. Did the reporter hear that, the request that they be sworn in?
Yes. Mr. Hughes, could you speak up? I'm having a hard time near you.
Okay.
Could you state your name, please?
Ryan Allezaki. A-L-E-X-A-K-I.
I'm sorry, one more time, that's interference.
A-L-E-X-A-K-I. Nick Vastardis. V-A-S-T-A-R-D-I-S.
Do you know, Mr. Ryan, that's probably about to be a dispute, so nothing but the reason of the gun?
I do.
Thank you.
And I'll note for the record, this is Mike Peters again. When you are speaking, make sure that you identify yourself, so obviously when Ed is asking questions, we'll know who he's talking to. But just for the court reporter's benefit, please identify yourself before speaking. Ed, please, go ahead.
Okay. I passed out to the council members our exhibit package. We have seven exhibits. I'll go through them briefly. A1 is the deed showing ownership of the property in Kraft Custom Homes. A2 is the assessor's property printout and map showing ownership and location of the property. A3 is the land development plan set, sheets 1 through 5 of 5, last revised July 15, 2020. A4 are the floor plans for the proposed residential building. A5 are the building cross-sections with heights. A6 is the computer-generated renderings of the proposed project. And A7 is the resume of Nick Vastardis, our professional engineer. So we're here seeking only conditional use for height of the building. In the residential overlay district in which the property is located, the maximum height is 35 feet unless a higher height is approved by Borough Council. The underlying zoning district is limited industrial, which has a maximum height of 40 feet. We're proposing a height slightly less than 40 feet, but more than 35 feet, requiring a conditional use. So the first witness would be Ryan Allezaki, who is a member of the ownership company, the Limited Liability Company. Ryan, could you state your name again?
Ryan Allezaki.
And what is your address?
Business or personal?
Business.
541 East Hector Street, Conshawken.
Do you currently occupy the property?
We do.
And what is your occupation?
The business that occupies East Hector Street right now is a valet company that services the tri-state area for a variety of parking needs, and then also home to Kraft Custom Homes, which redevelops properties in the surrounding communities.
And Kraft Custom Homes LLC owns the subject property?
It does.
And that's evidenced by exhibit A1 and A2?
Yes.
And you're the sole member of the Limited Liability Company?
I am.
Authorized to speak on behalf of the company this evening?
Yes.
And can you describe the existing property?
So the existing property is a one-story building which was previously used for manufacturing or printing. If you're familiar with the property, it's in disrepair. You know, it's been, hasn't been maintained for a period of time. There's a significant amount of non-conforming uses that ride with the property in accordance to front yard setback, rear yard setback, impervious, parking, side yard setbacks, things of that nature. Our proposal was to utilize the existing foundation and frame of the property and then developing up.
And you've led, on your proposed project, you appeared before the zoning hearing board?
So we've appeared before council initially with our desire or idea to redevelop the parcel. We then did go through zoning and the planning commission.
Did you receive the necessary relief from the zoning hearing board?
We did.
And can you describe your proposed project?
So our proposed project is to cap the existing structure with concrete, creating a fire break, and then a first-floor parking system. Our original proposal offered 24 spots. After going through the land development process, we were able to gain one additional spot for 25. We then proposed adding three additional stories for townhouses that face each other with a communal walk. Each townhouse would then have a rooftop deck.
And is the project set forth on exhibit A3, the land development plan set?
Is that what's on? Is A3 on the screen?
We don't have these.
That is our latest design.
And you're familiar with the borough zoning ordinance?
I am.
And could you describe the floor plans with regard to each floor in the proposed structure by reference to exhibit A4?
So the original plan that we were considering had a mix of two-bedroom and three-bedroom units. It was at the advice of council that we restricted each unit to two bedrooms to make sure we could meet our parking requirement. So each unit is fairly similar in design, slightly varying in size, but they are two-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath townhomes.
Can we just go back to that again? I know that you keep saying townhomes.
Sure.
But all of our-
Mr. Peters, I'm having a very hard time hearing. Does that look kind of the court reporter?
Sure, sure. Ms. Leonard, can you try to speak up a little bit? It's hard for the court.
Okay. Can you hear me now? So you keep, you keep referring to them as townhomes.
Sure.
We have everything listed for them as condos. Can someone clarify the difference?
The building itself would be legally a condo, okay?
That's correct.
Communal and an HOA. If I'm saying townhomes, it's because we market, sell them as designed, styled as townhomes instead of flats. So from a sales and marketing standpoint, what we do is we call them townhomes. It is a condo building.
But for us, it's a big difference in ordinances.
Okay.
Am I correct on that, Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a good, it's a good point to make.
So I'm going to clarify that you are building condos, not townhomes.
Yes.
Okay. Can you hear me?
No, I'm having a very hard time hearing.
Okay. I'll keep trying to be louder for you. Sorry.
Well, condominium is a form of ownership.
I understand that.
Itself is a townhouse, and they're being marketed for sale.
Yes, but if you put them in front of the borough as a townhome, you're gonna have to start over because townhomes ordinances are much different than a condo. Am I correct in that, Mr. Peters?
Well, Ed, why don't, why don't you explain why you believe they're townhomes? Why don't we start there?
They're not, they're designed in a, the definition or style of a townhouse would be multiple floors.
Right.
Okay? So if you look at the building by guppies, which are flats designed, sold as condos.
Correct.
So by definition, this was designed as a condo building. It meets the condo, you know, ordinance. That's what we were going for. We designed them in the style of a townhouse, right? Because that's what's desirable to today's buyers. So if there's confusion on that end, that's, that's-
I just wanted to clarify it, that's all.
So each unit-
I don't want to start over. So what-
Understand.
Each unit has multiple floors?
Yes.
And A4 are the floor plans?
Yes.
So the first floor is basically the ground-level parking area. Is that correct?
Yes.
And what happens on the first floor? First living floor?
So you enter what we're calling an airwalk, which is a center aisle way between both structures. Okay? So your patios face an interior aisle way for a community effect, which is what, you know, we're looking to develop. You would then come up your platform, go to the airwalk, and then walk to whichever unit you would then purchase. The first floor is traditional, you know, kitchen, powder room, living room, dining, you know, things of that nature.
Now, the exhibit A4 has a number of pages. One of them is the first floor plan?
Yes.
Which you just described. The second one would be the second floor plan?
Yes.
And what's the second floor consist though?
Master bedroom and laundry.
And then you have the third floor plan?
Yes.
And what's that consist though?
Third floor plan is our second bedroom, second bath, and then access to the rooftop deck.
Could you speak up, please?
Yes.
And you indicated that you're familiar with the borough ordinance. The height limitation in the residential overlay district is 35 feet. Is that correct?
In the overlay district.
Yes.
Yes.
And in the underlying district, it's 40 feet.
Yes. So our original proposal, when we went to zoning and council, was for a 40-foot building. At that time, Chris Stettler was handling the application. It was when Eric Johnson came on as zoning officer, he had looked at and said, you know, the height of the building in the overlay district is 35, and it wasn't something that we had originally requested, even though it was something that was shown the entire time and on all of our plans. I would point out that 35 feet, which is the overlay district, the overlay district is 35 feet to midspan, okay? Which allows for a 40-foot building height because ours is a flat roof or rooftop deck, okay? That's where we come into the conflict of going from the 35 feet to the 45 feet. If we were to put some type of sloped roof on this entire design, we could then meet the 35-foot midspan, but it alters the entire appearance of the building.
Mr. Johnson, would you like to contribute on that?
Ms. Leonard, why don't we let Ed finish with the witness, and then we'll have Mr. Johnson sworn?
Okay.
So you're here this evening seeking relief by conditional use to exceed 35 feet?
Yes.
And exhibit A5 is a cross-section of the building?
It is.
And could you describe the various heights identified on exhibit A5?
So I'll just go off of the left side, you know? So the reason the numbers are different is because the grade of the existing property is higher on the right side, so we'll go off the low side that we're looking at. And these are average grade points. So if you look at the left side, you can see where the side grade is that's bearing, you know, against the building. And this will be looking at it from East Elm Street up. We have a 37 foot, 3 inches to the soffit line, okay? Which is what you're gonna see from the street level. The soffit line is what is the top overhang of the main roof. We have 38.9 feet to the midspan of that sloped roof. That roof is a 412, which is really the recommended minimal slope needed for that type of roof. And then you see it's a 40-foot average grade to the ridge of that, that top line. From the street, if you were looking up at the building or at the side of the building, what you're gonna see is that soffit line. You're not gonna be able to see or notice the metal that's on top.
Are there any other structures in the vicinity of the proposed project with heights that are near 40 feet?
So directly catty corner of this parcel, if you're familiar with Conchi Corner, which is the restaurant slash bar, across the street from that was Bill Sabonis's building, which was recently condoed. That building would be at or exceed our 40 feet. You then have the, I believe it's the Freeman Nut Company, which is on the same side of the street, approximately one block up. This building would also meet or exceed that 40 feet. Surrounding structures outside of that, Conchi Corner's not at 40, but it's 35 or so with its upper line. And then there's one resident to the right of us, and then there's rental units to the left of us. That would, they would be under the 40 feet height.
Would the height of the building, as we propose it on exhibit A5, be contrary to public health safety or welfare?
Absolutely not.
And will the height of the building, as proposed, have any impact on vehicular circulation, roadway improvements, pedestrian circulation, utilities, buffering, screening, or natural resources?
No.
Thank you.
There, at a building height of 35 to 40 feet from the road, generally speaking, there is not a noticeable difference from that soffit line that you're seeing. You know, one foot, two foot, three foot. When you get into 10 to 15 foot with surrounding properties, you're then seeing, seeing a height difference. This is minimal at best.
Ed, are those the only questions for this witness?
Yeah, and that's the council, would, council like the applicant to walk through exhibit A6 and A7, which are renderings of what the proposal, the project will look like when it's built? How many units are in here? 12.
12.
Yep. And for the court reporter's benefit, that was council member Bob Stokely.
So these, these other homes are staying, right? Where the Nicholas Lorenzo and them are staying?
Are you talking, are there surrounding homes around the property? They are.
And the parkings underneath?
The parkings underneath.
So Mike, this is for general questions for the developer?
It is for, it is questions for this witness.
Okay.
That's correct. And after you are done, we will ask Mr. Majid if he has any questions.
Okay. Jane Flanagan, I have a few questions. I'm really concerned with the traffic turning out onto Hector Street.
Mm-hmm.
Because that's a very heavily traveled road.
Sure.
And the speed limit is not observed consistently.
Very familiar.
Why did you not choose to have it all exit out on a one-way street, which would be safer?
So our original aspect of when we came to council that was discussed, that we could take it either way. It was determined at that time, as long as we met sight distance and safety of that radius of pulling out, that it would be better for the residents to be able to make a left or a right versus coming down Hector Street and then only being able to make, you know, the left out onto the East Elm.
I know that you did some sort of a traffic study, but do you know the volume of traffic on Hector Street?
So-
Say from 4:00 in the afternoon?
So we-
6:00 or during the rush hour in the morning?
I can reference a traffic study which we did on our application for East Elm, which is coming up. Being that there, you know, we can also provide a traffic study, but similar locations or directives, they would fall under the same thing. Going from a commercial building to a residential building significantly decreases the amount of traffic on both of those roadways.
Except for this one.
Right. Because this-
I would disagree. So I have a valet company in there now. I have 150 employees. They are visiting the office several times a week.
Right.
So right now, there's 500 or more travels on Hector Street.
Because of your-
Because of the business that's in there.
There's not a driveway exit right now onto Hector Street? Is that how they exit the building?
We enter and park on a driveway on Hector and then reverse out onto Hector.
Right. Because I have to say, I live right there, and I've never seen anyone coming out of that driveway. I felt like the building was basically abandoned for a long time.
They back right out onto Hector.
I've never seen that.
Or they're parking on Hector. I mean, there's a dump truck parked in the driveway right now.
Right.
There's three or four cars in that driveway every single day.
Right.
We park on the East Elm side.
Does PennDOT have any current statistics on the traffic on Hector Street? I think that would be very helpful for us to make our decision because one of our concerns is not just our residents, but unfortunately, we're drive-through town during commuting hours.
Sure.
And the speed gets pretty nasty there, and that's why the stop sign's there.
Mm-hmm.
But again, I have grave reservations about people making left-hand turns.
I would be happy to have a traffic study done, have it on board for the September 16 meeting. That's not a problem at all. I am positive that it's gonna show a reduction in traffic on East Hector Street and East Elm, based on the conversion of a commercial use to a residential use. And then that can be verified by, you know, the engineer that works for the township for traffic.
So are you saying that, this is Tina Sokolowski. Are you saying that based on actual values that the traffic study will come up with? Or what you're quoting is statistics from prior projects that are out in the field that say?
So what they, what they generally quote is they take the demographic of an area, okay? For example, a 7,000 square foot commercial building that's rented could have this percentage of employees or vehicles at any given time. Then they take the average use of a residential project like this. We comply with the two spaces per unit. However, studies show us that on average, it would only be one and a half spaces used for vehicle access. Then they take the number of trip travels per day to come up with an average of reduction.
But that's based on the trip generation tables by the Institute of Traffic Engineers.
Right. So this is all statistical values-
Yes.
-from historical projects.
Yes.
Not specific to what Conshawken's unique character and-
They take into consideration, when you read those reports, the demographic of the neighborhood, the amount of commercial space, the amount of residences, the amount of on-street parking. You know, not being an engineer, I can't sit here and tell you whether this report is accurate or inaccurate, right? As in everything we do through land development, whether it's Pinoni or Gilmore, you know, I take the recommendation of, you know, the professional. I absolutely agree with you that Hector at 4 to 5, pulling out of there is a, is a busy roadway. I do, however, would disagree that we would not be decreasing the number of travels on Hector Street.
Mike, I need to ask you a question. Anita Barton. Since this is being changed from a commercial property to a residential property, shouldn't there be more green space with it instead of all this? I see very little greening.
So it's a good question. We will hit that during the land development portion.
Okay.
So hold your question until this hearing is over, and then ask it again. It's a good question, okay?
And then one final question. The in and out for the garage, it, so it's in and out on both sides, not in one side, out the other side? Is that how this is designed?
The, we have a cartway that could handle in and out. And look, it doesn't matter to me whether we go up to Hector and exit, or we go down to Elm and exit. It doesn't affect us from a sales standpoint. If the board is passionate about the fact that Hector is busier than East Elm, which I would agree, the parking design works for a both-way cartway. When we changed it to pick up one additional spot, that's how we were able to achieve that. Originally, the parking was completely different, and it was one-way from East Elm to Hector Street. But no, I don't have a problem with them. If that's something that you guys think is a good idea, it's, you know.
Right. And especially because there are the condos across the street, almost directly across the street.
Mm-hmm.
They will, your driveways won't align perfectly, but they're gonna be very close.
They're very, very close.
For Egress, yeah.
Oh, yeah. They're 100% very, very close.
So that would be another concern of mine. Again, it's a super busy street.
Sure.
And, you know, residents are frequently complaining about the speeding and the traffic and all that.
Sure.
So I would like to be respectful of the current residents.
Yeah, and I will point out that we did present this plan and take it to the majority of neighbors. We had overwhelmingly positive support from everybody.
Do you have a petition or something that people have signed? Do you have a petition or something that people have signed?
We submitted it to our original plan and into zoning. I want to say it was 30 to 40 signatures of neighborhood support. We did have one individual come to the original meeting. That was the Williams, which is directly to the right. They didn't approve or object during that meeting. You know, I know Leonard and all of them, personally, I know they're looking forward to the project, so.
Right. I think it would be a great improvement for the neighborhood. I'm in favor of it. It's just my concern is.
Being in that building, I'm excited to get out of it and move my business somewhere else.
The traffic is really the key in Concha Hocken right now. And we know when you have a rental situation, there might be two people on the lease, and you're saying one and a half cars, that's not.
Again, that's what they consider average. And I will tell you that in previous projects, for this type of project that we develop, we are selling mostly to single individuals. Right, business professionals who are, these aren't family units. So we're not getting downsizers. We're not getting people with kids. We're getting individuals who want to be near the entertainment of Concha Hocken. Many of them don't have cars to begin with. So my parking company handles Londonbury Apartments during those things. I can tell you that they meet the parking requirement for the number of apartments. But if you're in there at any given day, it is half-empty. They're not anywhere near capacity for number of cars. Same exact buyer, industry professional, public transportation, or it's a single-use vehicle.
I guess, keeping with the safety issue, have you gotten feedback from our fire marshal yet concerning? That was one of the county's comments about the safety of the fire, of the garage if there was a fire.
So as far as I know to this point, and Nick the engineer can chime in, we've complied through the land development process with all aspects of ingress, egress, safety, and all those things.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions for this part of the hearing for the height?
Yeah, I do. I'm not very happy with the 40 feet.
Ms. Barton, if you could, please, just identify yourself for the co-reporter.
Anita Barton. I'm not happy with the 40 feet. I have a 40-foot buildings up the street from me, and they're awful. I mean, all you see is building. And I don't understand why you can't stick to the 35 in the overlay.
It's not possible. Unless I change, we change to a sloped roof or midspan, my building is still going to be 40 feet. 40 feet to rich, right? I can meet that at a 35-foot midspan. However, you're then going to have sloped roofs with all asphalt shingles. Okay? This design was presented, one council before, two zoning, planning commission, all of the neighbors has a great look to it. It was simply an oversight where the LI district allows 40 feet, where the overlay district goes to 35-foot to midspan.
But a few minutes ago, you said 45.
Forty, 35 feet to midspan, 40 feet.
Now, before, when you were talking, you said the overall height would be maxed out at 45.
No, our height presentation's 40 feet. If I, probably because I have this mask in my mouth.
Yeah, it's tough.
35 feet to midspan, the building we're proposing is 40 feet.
At the peak.
At the peak. And the soffit line you're going to see is 38.9. So we're approximately, you know, three feet over the 35 feet.
So you're set on having those upper decks?
It has nothing to do with the upper deck. That's where my second bedroom is. Due to the sizing of the units, that's how we get our second bedroom. I can't reduce that half at all, you know, and make the project work. I mean, it's just not, I mean, I would hope council would, you know, in all applications tonight, an aspect of that, these raised parking decks to increase parking spaces are extremely expensive. You know, it was presented originally, could we reduce from 12 to 11? You know, that's not feasible on a project of this size.
I just feel like you're squeezing a whole lot in to a very narrow lot.
We are. I mean, it's unapplicable that zoning, and through all of our aspects tonight, is a broad stroke when they're looking at ordinances. Infill development of these type of projects is a little bit of a finer touch. So to make a capital investment of $5 million into the community, we need to be able to reach the number of bedrooms and the number of units to do that. It's not feasible any other way. And 40 feet to 38 feet, or 38 to, there's no noticeable difference. I mean, it's not.
So it's Sokolowski speaking. Anita, this really is in line with what the comprehensive plan talks about in those areas. So it's infill of that industrial area. And I think that you've done a good job to make it blend. There's just, I think the biggest concerns are the roadway entering in it. That's, I think, the biggest concern.
I have the same concerns. You know, my businesses are here right now, right? We have a lot of employees. I understand the traffic. I mean, we took, you know, going through land development, re-engineering and designing the project to get one additional space was at a significant expense, realizing that every space is kind of vital for this whole entire area. And then when I moved my businesses to East Elm, which is where they're going, it's a similar situation of redevelopment and trying to be, you know, sensitive to the needs of neighbors, especially during construction. I mean, you know, Ray brought that up, you know, it is a heavily traveled area. We have to sequence things a little bit differently, you know, not insensitive to that. We think we're improving the situation, which is traditionally what we see from commercial to residential. You know, again, I don't think it's necessarily adding cars. I do agree that would be adding additional traffic just coming out of Hector. Where right now, you know, we have three spots, right? So the traffic coming out is either coming, three cars coming out, and everybody else is parking on Hector or East Elm. I park off of East Elm. There's no traffic on East Elm. Outside of the gym, the gym members.
Right.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Majid, who is on the line, do you have any questions for this witness?
Yes, I have a couple of questions.
And Mr. Majid, if I could pause you for a second. I think our court reporter can probably hear you. Are you good, Ed?
Yes, I can hear him fine. I can hear him fine.
Yeah, good, okay. Go ahead, Mr. Majid, sorry.
Yeah, Ed, you have great ears, because I've been having trouble hearing the whole hearing. But I don't know if you're having that same situation. But anyway, I'm the property owner of 544 Elm Street, which is in the rear of this project. Unfortunately, the last couple hearings there were, I was not informed. I'm not on the phone. I was out of town. And this one, I called Eric Johnson, who was, you know, very cordial in getting me on the agenda today. I want to thank you. Someone like the terms of construction, how long the construction is, what kind of, you know, things that the owner has to play, as I have an operating business next door to me on Hector, there is no parking at all?
Mr. Majid, let's actually, those are good questions, so let's break them up. At this time, you will have an opportunity to make a statement, but at this time, it's time to ask this witness questions. So you just had a few questions there. Could you break them up and the witness will try to answer?
Yeah, I could do that. And I also disagree with all of their statements of the caller about it. You know, he's saying that they're the 7,000 square foot industrial building, no way will they be bringing more people, absolutely. If you have apartments there with, you know, two bedrooms, there could be anywhere between two to six people living in there. All the parking is going to end up on the back of Elm Street. You know, our building is a thorough building, and I was kind of dismayed that now they're coming in with a height requirement of 40. But if you look at the structure, you see the plan, you see that will definitely impair the deck and could squash the whole project if you don't get this five feet. I understand the $5 million acquisition into the community, but I feel it's not needed, and there's enough ground in Concha Hocken. And also like getting to, you know, get in touch with me or someone getting in touch with me. My building touches up against the existing building. There's maybe three or, I mean, maybe 16 inches between our buildings.
Mr. Majid, do you have a question for Mr. Alex Akie at this time?
Yeah, I have a question. Is, if you don't get the five feet approved, does that hurt the, what you're calling the deck, the roof down deck?
Are you the gym? Is your business the rental with the gym? Were you the?
I'm the owner of the property.
Oh, the one that has the gym in it?
Yeah.
So it's, to speak to the parking, this gym did receive zoning relief for lack of parking, okay? Each and every day, they park all along Elm. They block every driveway on Elm. We ask them to move consistently, right, we want to be neighborly. I'm providing parking for my units. I meet the parking requirement. So to get back to the 35 feet, if it is the, if the board's decision is to have me redesign the structure to somehow comply with that 35 feet, creating some type of midspan, okay, we can do anything, right? We're presenting what we think is the best possible use from a design standpoint. But no, not getting this five feet doesn't stop the project.
Mr. Majid, you can't talk over the witness. The court reporter can't take it down. Please allow him to finish responding, and then you can ask a follow-up.
So again, if we don't get the five feet, then we'll go back to a redesign. We'll probably have to go back to planning commission. We'll do a new rendering, an idea of the structure. In the end of the day, it costs me time. I will design something that's attractive for the property. I mean, I think the board knows my opinion of what really we're talking here is not.
Right.
And again, I will point out, we did circulate and mail to all of the residences, including this address. We do have support of all of the neighbors surrounding. It's unfortunate that we're now getting, you know, which I'm not sensitive to. I mean, change is difficult in these communities. We have overwhelming support from all of the surrounding properties.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just confused, this little dismayed out, you know, your architect missed that, because at the end of the day, if you don't get this five feet, it's going to affect the impairment of the deck. The parking, you're not going to be able to control. You might have parking for the, you know, for the tenants.
Mr. Majid, I'm sorry to cut you off, but you do have to ask questions. It's not appropriate to make statements at this time, so please ask this witness questions if you have any. Otherwise, you can present a statement at the end of the hearing.
Okay, my thing is the land caller was giving her statements about traffic, and right away going to Hector and.
Those were questions by a borough council member. So please ask a question if you have one.
What are you going to do with the parking situation with the visitors, the people that stay over and guests? Where are they going to park?
So in meeting the parking requirement to construct our two-bedroom units, we do have what is one visitor space. I understand that, you know, the reality of the situation is that there will be guests that travel to Hector Street or to this location, no different than any of the residences, right? The restaurants, Bar Luca, I mean, their parking lot can't accommodate, same thing. There's street parking for overflow. Again, I will point out that the business that is in this particular building uses a significant amount of street parking every day, not when people just visit or come for an event for a two-bedroom. I would also disagree with the statement that you could have six people living in these units. You know, it is illegal to co-mingle sexes in a second bedroom. You know, so even if it was, you know, a mother and a father, you're not having four children, you know, in any unit. So we honestly think it's mostly, again, single individuals who are moving to these units, not families, not communal environment.
No, I don't, excuse me, because I disagree. I own 17 properties.
Sir, sir, I'm sorry. You really do have to ask a question. It's not the time to argue with the witness.
My question, so then my question would be, how can you come to that analysis? Who's going to be purchasing it if they're not going to have children or a multitude of people in the park for a condo or a townhouse?
We take the general consensus or average of sales to a community. So it is correct in the aspect that I cannot deed-restrict who could possibly purchase. We simply take what is the community or what is the buyer of the community, no different than single-family residential, townhouse residential, condos, apartments. It's all geared after a specific target base. And then we design to that target base while meeting the parking requirements that are put forth by the borough.
Do you know the actual space between the property line of my property and your property?
I'm very familiar. Your dumpster is on my property by several feet, every single day, including all of your trash.
Do you, Mr. Alex Akie, do you have, am I saying your name correctly? I don't want to say it incorrectly.
Perfect.
Okay. Do you know that distance?
It's, I believe it's a foot and a half. It might be 16 inches from where our property line is.
It's shown on your land development plans, and we'll get to the land development later. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. With that, Mr. Hughes, why don't you call your next witness?
Nick, the start is our professional engineer. Nick, can you state your name, please? Nick, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Say your name, please. What is your occupation?
Professional civil engineer.
What's your connection with this project?
I'm a project engineer.
And you designed the land development plan?
I did.
Have you testified before council and zoning hearing board in the borough of Concha Hocken before?
Can you repeat that?
Have you testified before council before or the zoning board?
Yes.
Have you testified as a professional engineer in other projects? Have you been called out as an expert in professional engineering?
Yes.
I've also been witness as an expert in professional engineering.
President Leonard, given the witness's qualifications, it would be my recommendation to council that you accept the witness as an expert in, did you say civil engineering?
Yes.
In civil engineering?
Yes.
He's so accepted, Mr. Hughes, please continue.
Do you agree with the description of the project by Ryan?
I do, yes.
In your opinion, would the proposed height of the building have any adverse impact on the community?
No, it would have no adverse effect on the health or safety of the community.
And does the height of the building have any impact on traffic?
I believe so, no.
If the applicant obtains conditional use approval, we still need to get land development approval. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And we're in the process of seeking land development approval as we speak? Are we in the process of seeking land development approval?
Yeah.
Thank you.
With that, again, limited to the issue that's before council in this hearing, the height, does anyone have questions for applicant's engineer?
No.
No. No.
Seeing none from council, Mr. Majid, this is the opportunity for you to ask any questions to applicant's engineer.
Yeah, were you, was he, are you the initial developer on the design of the building?
About that, we weren't.
So you said that you didn't think it would have an adverse effect on the traffic?
I think the building that one would.
With the amount of people that are going to be living there?
Same amount of people, like people.
Yeah. Okay. They're going to hang out on the roof deck, correct?
Is that the way it's going to be?
And without that design, they won't be able to have that roof deck, correct?
I really can't speak to that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, with that, Mr. Hughes, do you have any additional witnesses to present this evening?
I do not.
Counsel, does counsel have any other questions as a result of the engineer's testimony for any of the witnesses in this matter? It appears that they do not. At this time, Ed, I'll give you a chance to make a closing if you'd like, and then we will hear from Mr. Majid if he would like to make a statement.
Thank you. I would move for the admission of our exhibit.
Thank you, I would move for the admission of our exhibits A1 through A6.
Counsel, I recommend that they be admitted?
Yes.
They're so admitted, Ed, thank you.
So, we're at this stage now where our use is a permitted use, we have the necessary variances from zoning hearing board, we're seeking land development approval, we're here this evening just for the single purpose of having a height of up to 40 feet, which is permitted by zoning ordinance which says the height limit is 35 feet unless otherwise permitted by borough council as a conditional use. Conditional uses are permitted uses as long as they don't have an adverse impact on the community, different or more adverse than would normally be associated with a 40-foot roof. We have 40-foot roofs or heights in the community nearby, we have 40 feet of that in the underlying zoning district, there's been no indication that this height has an adverse impact on the community other than any other 40-foot high building, so I believe we're entitled to a conditional use, there are no other specific standards required, and I think our testimony established our right to go to 40 feet as shown on our exhibits, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
With that, Mr. Majid, now is the time to make a statement to council if you would like to, please.
Yeah, in, in my last statement, I just feel as though the, uh, project people should have known that the height requirement, the water runoff at a higher rate, uh, the, uh, the deck that, uh, that they show in the plan, they should have known and had to go to that in the initial, and, um, just, just, they're my concerns, and, and being the building right next door in the rear, the parking is horrendous as is with the borough and the other businesses that are around there, and I just think it would be congested and the height requirements I think are just unadaptable. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, with that, there are a few things that, that counsel discussed during its questioning of the witness, most particularly, it would be the investigation of changing the traffic flow into the property and also the concept of doing a traffic study. My recommendation, if counsel is inclined, would be to address those matters during the land development stage, so with that, I believe that counsel could close the hearing this evening, the hearing would be, or the, this matter would be continued for purposes, I'm sorry, let me restate that for the record, the record would close this evening, so at your next meeting, you would not accept additional evidence or testimony or position statements, however, the hearing would be continued to your September 19th date, or September 16th date at 7:00 PM. Again, it would be a hybrid meeting with borough council meeting here at 400 Fayette Street, Conshohocken in Borough Hall, and with the public participating remotely with information to be posted on the Borough of Conshohocken website at conshohockenpa.gov. Counsel, is that a plan that you'd like to proceed with, that being that you would hold a vote on this matter until the next meeting?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes and Mr. Majid, that is how we will proceed, this matter will be continued until September 16th with information in, in terms of remote participation to be provided at a later date. With that, we can close the hearing, we thank our court reporter, and, and if you need any help with what was said, I know that we have a recording and we would be happy to share it with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the preliminary final land development application for 541 East Hector Street Craft Custom Homes, Mr. Peters?
Thank you very much, President Leonard, I think the application has been introduced sufficiently, so I will turn it over to Mr. Hughes to run through any presentation he'd like to make on behalf of the applicant. You also have Mr. Johnson who's on the line as well as Ms. McNair who's on the line. I know there was a question for Mr. Johnson, so you can hit that if you, if you still have it, and with that, Ed, please proceed.
Thank you. So we're here seeking preliminary final land development approval for our project, we've been through the planning commission review and a series of revisions to the plan in response to review letters from the zoning officer, traffic engineer, borough engineer, and county planning commission, and the local planning commission. So, with the current review letters in place, we're in a situation where we will comply with all those review comments.
Okay.
With compliance with all those review comments, we satisfy all the objective requirements in the subdivision land development ordinance for approval of the project. Planning commission has, both county and borough have recommended approval of the project as presented. We have a series of waivers that we're asking for, which were again reviewed in detail at the planning commission and recommended for approval by the planning commission.
So I, I do have, um...
Please don't.
Did you hear that?
I have no idea.
So, on the waivers, I, the, the first question I do have is, you're asking for a waiver to permit, to permit three-foot curb radius for the Kirby rather than the five-foot, is there a particular reason for that?
Nick.
Nick, can you address that, that comment? Three-foot versus five-foot radius?
Nick, you're still on mute.
Sorry. If it's easier for parking spots, maybe for less than five?
He must have his phone on, he's getting a note.
That's, so that's one of the ways we're able to gain that additional parking spot.
Okay, so if we don't have the additional parking spot, then it would go back up to the five-foot?
We could, we could look back into that, you would lose, we were attempting to...
I understand.
The process always was to try to maximize as much parking as possible.
I, I understand, which changes if we change the traffic flow and where they come in and out also, is that correct?
So, the, the parking, uh, traffic flow would not, I don't believe, would alter or affect any of our spaces, whether, like if we were coming in from Hector and let's say exiting on Elm, if you were to, uh, adjust the slip on Hector, then that you would be losing that one space. The project would still comply from a parking standpoint, you know, we would still have 24, that would be our 25th.
Okay.
And then whenever, the other aspect of this is when there's obviously a significant amount of waivers that we're going to be going through.
Right.
A large portion of those waivers are existing non-conformities of the site, you know, Karen was pointing them out in her land development application, but, but a lot of them are existing just due to the, the general design and build of what's currently, you know, green space, location of trash, things of that nature.
The green spaces probably aren't our next question.
Sure.
I, I see that you are asking for a waiver from providing six-foot high landscape screening for the multifamily development, I'm, I'm sure there's a reason?
So, if you're familiar with the location of this structure now, you know, and, and back to Mr., you know, Majid's, some of his comments, you know, this property essentially straddles the side yards, okay? So we're, we're unable to meet that requirement just because of the, the existing design of the building. We can't meet it on the Hector Street side, which, to the building to the left, we do have a parking spot, you know, there, and right now, if you're familiar, that's asphalt paving that drops off, which is straight all the way through.
Okay. But there is, you, you, as of right now, that's not me, right? As of right now, there is no landscape plan at all, is that correct?
No, I, I believe, Nick, you can attest or, or pull up that sheet, we will be having landscaping on our airwalk, if you look at some of the renderings, you're seeing large planters, things of that nature, we cannot meet the, the street tree ordinance, specifically if you go to the Elm Street side, it's solid concrete from line to line, on the Hector Street side, we have paving from line to about the middle point, maybe not close to the middle point, you then have a patch of grass, you know, we could probably, you know, whatever Nick has designs, I think he has one tree in there, so...
Two, one on each side.
Yeah, that, that he's getting in, but it's, we, we can't meet on the frontage of Hector and Elm just to the existing size of the building.
So I, I also, I'm going to question the pedestrian lighting also. Why is that a waiver also, not to put that in?
Nick?
It's on East Hector and Elm that you're asking for a waiver for that.
Nick?
Yeah, I'm, I'm really getting here, I'm, I'm sorry.
The, the question is why you're asking for a waiver on Hector and Elm for pedestrian lighting?
Um, um, more of us are trying to keep the lighting on and study, I don't know that the long lighting, pedestrian lighting is going to help right there?
Sure would.
But I guess my question would be, safety again, with cars coming in and out, couldn't you have lighting mounted on the building that reflected down right on the sidewalk? Not that it would be a standalone light pole like you would have on the front yard of someone's, but shouldn't there be some lighting, both on Elm and Hector, that would just light that immediate area on the sidewalk?
We do, we do present a general overall lighting plan for the parking garage and our entire airwalk, I do think the ambient lighting from both of those is more than enough to cover from the front of Hector and the, the back of Elm, not opposed at all to add flood lighting, hazard lighting, any type of lighting, but I know the question that, that is going to come up is the lumens and is it affecting, the East Elm Street side doesn't matter, right, because it's a sewage plant, so you're, you're not bothering anybody down there.
Right, right, but we give a lot of joggers and people likes at night.
On the Hector Street side, there's residents, you know, would that be impacting their homes at all by having lighting shining down from the building into Hector Street?
And again, they could be subtle, but I feel like the sidewalks should definitely be lit at that point, and we don't want a street light there, but...
If we can comply, uh...
Which is have just little porch lights on them that everyone, that's sufficient.
We have, I mean, we have hanging lanterns and streetlights up on our airwalk, I mean, it's...
Aesthetically, it's beautiful, I'm...
There's clay lighting up there and underneath the garage, but I understand the concept that there's probably not enough up front.
Addressing the garage, there still is not a final plan for the lighting for the garage, correct?
Uh, I believe our last comment was, was that we will be able to comply to the lumens which, which was requested, so we, we will be able to comply to the brightness of the lights, you know, and everything in that parking garage.
And the direction so that they don't affect the residents, that was, I, I...
And the other aspect, when we're thinking about our project and the underground parking, so you have the East Elm Street side, there's no residences down there, our entire parking lot's capped and enclosed, so we can't affect the neighbors to the left and the right, we'd strictly be talking about the Hector Street frontage and the residences to the left, the right, and across the street.
Right.
So one of the things I want to make sure that we're aware of is, we can talk about what it's like today, and there's no lighting there today, but remember, that was industrial, if our objective is backfill and starting to turn that into residential, we don't want to shortfall ourselves and not look at that.
If I can get a lamp post or a light and, you know, Nick and Karen can make that work without, I would say, without adversely impacting, you know, you know, is there lighting that can be put directly into the sidewalk, you know, I mean, that's obviously in the right of way, you know, and there's, and there's things that we can do, there's paver lighting out front, could we illuminate certain aspects of our drive coming in, you know, within ground pavers to help illuminate, I mean, there's lots of things that, that we can look at, I think that would be better, you know, Karen and Nick, you know, before the 16th can kind of work up what they think would be, so the tricky aspect of that is I don't know that you're gonna find something that maybe meets the lumen requirement that would eliminate the waiver, however, we can do something to improve the lighting situation, you know, and agree to put that in through our building process, you know, final land.
I think what Jane was speaking on is, if you took either side of the driveway, there's the ones that are shaped like a half moon that just shine down, just enough light.
We can, we can definitely look at adding something like that.
I think that's what she was thinking of, because I've seen them where there are cones where they go up and down, and that's a lot of light, but I think she's thinking more muted light, but enough that residents feel comfortable being on either side.
I, I think, I mean, anything that, you know, can improve the project, again, I don't, I don't know it's something that's gonna be able to eliminate the waiver, but absolutely willing to sit there and add...
Right, as Tina spoke, the walkability is important.
You could use small landscape lighting to uplight the two street trees, you know, it doesn't add a lot of light, you know, it's an HOA, they would maintain it, but it adds something just to the street line that wouldn't adversely impact, a low voltage, low lumen, wouldn't impact any of the neighbors around, it's something that anybody could put in.
Okay, Frank, only getting half the conversation, can we put some longer lighting or something to light up the sidewalk?
Yeah, even if you do that...
Yeah, I mean, we can, I think, Nick, I think you and Karen can, you know, get together, you know, make a suggestion to Karen, or Karen might have some ideas on, you know, A, what the board is looking to achieve, I mean, aesthetically, it'll work in with our building under any circumstance, and we have plenty of surface area on that front, maybe come up, we're, talk with Eric, and maybe come up with a small landscape lighting plan, you know, that he can institute to the, to the landscape plan and then lighting for the front of the building.
And because you don't have ground in order to plant or anything, have you considered maybe boxes with plants in it to, to just green it up some?
So we are adding a significant amount of them to the face of our airwalk, okay, which is one story up in between, but if we have, let's say, the front of Hector, you know, there's, there's nothing really on, on Elm, I don't know that we're gonna be able to squeeze anything, because you have your, your, your trashcans in your containers, right?
Right.
But could we work in two street trees and some, maybe either floral boxes or something built on the front of Hector?
That's what I was thinking.
I mean, we can definitely look at, at doing something, you know, like that, that, again, we could have the landscape architect look to come up with an official design saying, okay, you could do window boxes on the face of Hector, right, that, that's, that the HOA could maintain, they look really nice, they would, they would fit and be fine.
You could do flower urns like we have on our steps leading into Borough Hall, and that could be part of the condos association to take care of them, and especially if the Hector Street is gonna be your entrance, you want to make that beautiful.
You've got all great ideas.
So that would be super attractive to buyers if you make that...
I think that's, these are all very good points and definitely something that we can, can and are willing to comply with from a design standpoint.
Thank you.
I don't have any more questions.
Okay. I'm gonna ask a question, and I'm not sure if I'm asking it on the correct property, because there was a lot of reading involved in these two properties, the stucco wall, is that this one or the next one?
That's this one, so, um, the existing foundation that we are maintaining is cinder block.
Okay.
So, you know, it's unsightly as it sits right now, it's been painted over and, and things of that nature, the plan was to stucco, you know, the, the two sides of the building.
Okay.
You know, and then, you know, we're wrapping the front of the building, and then we have siding in stone and everything going up top, I would not be opposed on the Hector Street side to do that front face out of stone, that matches up top instead of the stucco, it's simply way too much money to do the left, the, the surface area on the left and the right isn't financially viable, I do however, think that's a pretty good idea on specifically the Hector Street side, instead of having that nine-foot stucco wall and cut out, we could wrap that and...
Yes, the stone would be much better on there.
We could, we could wrap that in stone.
Okay. That was my last question, anyone else have any questions?
I'll note that you do, again, you have Mr. Johnson on, Ms. McNair, and I missed Brian Keveney earlier, but I saw as things shifted, his face showed up, so your, your traffic engineer is on as well.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for any of our, no?
No.
I think we're, I think we're good.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And for the applicant, this matter will be considered at the September 16th council meeting, there are a few follow-up items that we just discussed, so the administration and professionals will reach out to address.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thanks for coming in this evening.
We're, we're hanging out, we got another one.
We got another one. Leave a couple of things in between if you want to take a break.
All right, I'll definitely sit down.
Okay.
We badgered you enough?
I love it.
Actually, we don't, do we, Mr. Peters?
No, no, but, but counsel, if, if you're inclined to take a, a short break and hit some of the other items you can and bring the applicant back up after, it's up to you.
I think we could give him a break and go.
Sounds good, so, so let's hit manager matters and then... Sounds good, so, so let's hit manager matters and then.
Okay.
We'll come back.
Is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Under manager matters, um, this is discussion only, consider authorizing hall associates to collect resident and commercial recycling data for 2021 and 2022. Just a side note, the data that they, is used, um, that they do is used for grant monies that is submitted on behalf of the borough for recycling programs, so. Does anyone have any questions on that? No? Okay. The next item is also for discussion only, consider reopening B Burgville and Company to conduct the borough's annual financial audit for fiscal years 2021, 2022, and 2023. Administration does support their renewal, they were hired previously through the RFP process, so something to consider for our nine sixteen voting meeting. The next item, consider approving a tuition reimbursement for Detective Walter and Officer Hall for the 2020 fall semester. This is something, if council is inclined, I would need a motion to approve a tuition reimbursement for Detective Walter and Officer Hall for the 2020 fall semester.
I'll make that motion.
Does Ms. Barton?
Do we vote now?
Yes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 The next item is consider approving resolution 2020 dash twenty-two, an extension of the local disaster emergency until October seventh. If council is inclined, I do need a motion to approve resolution 2020 dash twenty-two to extend the local disaster emergency declaration until October seventh.
I'll make that motion, Sokolowski.
I'll second, Griffin?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
That, that was Ms. Tino saying.
Yeah, I thought it's just all of a sudden.
The next item, this is discussion only, is consider approving the borough's 2021 minimum municipal obligations as required by Act two oh five. This is the annual pension requirements for police, fire, and non-union employees. Act two oh five requires a formal vote by elected body by the end of September. The last item is consider accepting the resignation of a planning commissioner member. I would need a motion to accept the resignation of Jacqueline Rocco from the planning commission.
I'll make that motion.
That is Ms. Barton.
I'll second flagging.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Sorry to see her go.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Peters, now if we're ready, we can go back to two sixty-one, two sixty-three, East Elm Street Land Development Sketch Plan Presentation for Custom, Craft Custom Homes, again.
Thank you very much, President, and this matter is before you this evening on an, on an informational basis only. Uh, the applicant, the same applicant that you heard from for five forty-one East Hector is here with council to discuss two sixty-one to two sixty-three East Elm Street, and with that, I'll turn it over to Ed and Ryan.
Thank you very much. I passed out the handout of our proposed project. Craft Custom Homes has this property under agreement of sale condition on obtaining approval for the proposed project, which Ryan will now explain.
All right, so, um, I'm sure everybody's familiar with this particular parcel. Uh, it's directly across or catty corner from Pepper Chini Restaurant and then the Dr. Detail Commercial Building on Poplar. Right now, the property is, I'll call it mixed use in the aspect that there are offices, retail spaces, and a pit fitness gym. Uh, I know, we, we talked about the parking on the last one, we have the two traffic impact studies for this particular building. Definitely slightly of a different aspect, uh, understanding that the Hector Street building had no parking essentially, and for the most part was creating less traffic outside of my business. This complex specifically due to the aspect of a lot of the business has a significant amount of in and out traffic during the day. Uh, you know, peak business hours, um, I don't know specifically what pit fitnesses, gym hours are, but most of them are typically five thirty, six thirty, seven thirty, eight thirty, nine thirty, and then in the, the peak rush hour after that. What we are proposing is essentially something identical to our Hector Street parcel. Uh, the project right now is basically one hundred percent impervious. Beneath that building is actually the original train station. So if you were to go in, you can see all of the original corbels and bricks and windows that they've, you know, kind of built around. Our idea is to recapture and reuse the vast majority of that original structure into our new development. Different from the Hector Street parcel, while this building does have existing non-conformities in regards to some of the side rear front yards. Uh, we would be going to zoning and asking for additional relief to them to maintain the streetscape appearance, which is in line with all of the other residences on this block. We did have an original meeting with Mike and Ray. Uh, our original proposal was for twenty-two units, uh, we lacked the parking to do so. Uh, we were also requesting to retail spaces at the corner of Elm and Poplar. Mr. Johnson had said that we could not put, you know, because of the flood hazard areas, we could not do any type of retail space, uh, so we've removed them from the plan. Due to the design of the structure, even though we removed a twenty-second habitable, sellable unit, it is now listed as a community center for the complex. Uh, so bar, pool table, theater room, or gathering space for the residents. Uh, it's not like I can take, simply just take a unit out the way our frame is, is built. So we, we do meet the necessary parking requirement right now, we did do the two traffic studies, which I had previously referenced. Uh, the estimation, which has been concurred with, with the township professional, is that this building would reduce by an estimated at thirty thousand trips or so a year on Elm Street. They sound excited. Uh, we have not reached out to all of our neighbors yet, we would be doing that prior to zoning. We have had general discussions with some of the commercial properties or residents in the area. Uh, we haven't presented any type of petition, we have had support for the redevelopment of this property. Uh, we think what we're presenting falls directly in line with this type of redevelopment and infill location. So very, very similar, underground parking deck, raised airwalk, which takes you to your condo units, which will be designed three stories high with a rooftop deck. We are, will be requesting similar to for the height to maintain the appearance of the building, forty feet on the Elm Street side. The height is higher due to the topography of the ground on the train side. Uh, I will point out that the buildings directly across the street are fifty-five, sixty-five feet in height, uh, and, you know, there's no neighbors that would, we would be adversely impacting. Uh, the only individual on that end is the Dr. Detail Building, uh, we have spoken with them, they, you know, have offered initial support of the proposed plan. Similarly speaking, we will have to get creative with landscaping and things of that nature in the future. This is offering a reduction in the existing impervious. We are offering a grass or dog walk area in the back of the building while not visible.
How big is that?
Elm Street. Uh, Nick? Nick? How big is the estimated dog area?
I don't think he has his mic on.
Nick, you're muted again there.
Struggle's real with these.
It's a magnitude of.
Okay. So, not significant in the overall aspect of a development of this size. We're restricted, again, to the existing, you know, non-conformities of the site. So we have forty-two spaces, um, one thing that we will be introducing and will be one of, if not the first individuals in Concha Hakan, is between five and ten of the spots that are on the trolley side. We will be installing scissor lifts for cars that effectively takes each one of those spots into two spots. Uh, so we're attempting to come in maximizing this particular garage. We could offer additional scissor lifts to residents, however, we would need to increase the height of the building by approximately five additional feet on the Elm Street side uh, to be able to get our height requirement. These scissor lifts are extremely popular in this type of development, you see them a lot in luxury developments in the city where parking is at a demand. Uh, so we do anticipate, uh, going through the development process, exceeding our parking requirement for additional guest parking. Uh, and again, we do have the traffic analysis that it says that the real use of this building will be more likely one and a half spots per unit, not two. Uh, so we would have an expectation of between ten and twenty vacant spots for guest parking at any given time. We are utilizing the existing curb cuts, which may be adjusted slightly in width based on Karen's and Nick's final review. So we are not eliminating any on-street parking with the proposed development. I know that Ray had thought that it was a passionate aspect of maintaining as much parking as possible, as opposed to if somebody was to come and try to develop actual townhouses, you would then be using slips off of, uh, off of Poplar and Elm. You cannot meet the townhouse ordinance and make this project financially viable, uh, hence the development that we are proposing. Different in Hector in the aspect, it is a larger project, which allows us to, uh, afford an additional capital investment into the design of the building. So where Hector is almost all siding, this building is almost all stone, brick, metal. So it, it, it's going to have a significant exterior appearance, you know, and if you look up and down East Elm, you'll see a lot of the similar features of brick, stone, and stucco, and things of that nature, uh, around the community. You'll see the glass building at the corner of Elm and Poplar. That'll be developed, we're working with Eric on what an allowable use would be in that flood hazard area. It is my understanding, I may do a flood study, it is very, very close to meeting the one foot above the existing flood hazard area. If that is the case, we'd be coming back in with an option to develop that as a corner store if we could meet the parking requirement. If not, it would be a lobby or, you know, optional office for, uh, buyers of these units. These are not apartments, uh, it's not something we offer or do, each one is sellable, just like Hector. So, yeah, I mean, we think it's actually a really great infill and redevelopment of a parcel that, you know, just has been used as a commercial property for an extended period of time. It maximizes the value for the sellers, the Staley's, which have owned it for, you know, a long period of time, and we think pride of ownership and bringing in additional people to the community impacts the neighborhood in a positive way. Hopefully you'll agree, while decreasing, you know, the traffic that, that's coming in there right now.
Questions?
Um, so if you would explain again the difference, this is still a condo, people are purchasing their townhouses, but you will have an HOA?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that was my first question.
I keep, I, I, that's.
No, and I know it's.
I fired that into my brain, townhouse, 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 because that's the way we design it.
You did start with condo.
It's a condo.
Right, and that's why I just wanted to clarify that. And again, I still have a hard time believing there would be less traffic.
Sure.
If you're going to be put twenty-one families in there.
Sure.
Or twenty-two units that have, you know, at least probably two single people living in them. And they're two-bedroom condos?
Two-bedroom, so we took the lead of council's previous.
Okay.
Uh, advice, which was restricting our units to two bedrooms.
Right.
Versus three bedrooms, the parking requirement's essentially the same, however, obviously if you have a third bedroom, people rent, there could be an additional car.
Could, right.
Uh, as far as parking goes, I mean, all I can do is present the study.
Right.
And, and have the, you know, Brian from the township review said study, uh, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer. We pay and do these reports, they come back with information, we provide the information.
So I guess that would be my follow-up question, just like we did for the Hector Street property, if we could get, what's the daily average traffic on Elm? And.
So we can definitely do an increased count.
All right.
Um, you know, we can do an additional study where they physically count.
Right.
Cars that are coming in and out.
Right, of that property?
Of this particular property, cars that are parking, so for instance, if you're to go there at any time during the day, you'll see that there's very few cars actually in the parking lot.
Right.
The parking lot's utilized by the gym to work out, right? So they work out in the gym and they work out in the parking lot.
Right.
So those members are either walking.
Right.
Or bring, or parking.
Mm-hmm.
On the street, so while there's twenty-five spots in this location right now, those twenty-five spots aren't being utilized. We did not factor that into the traffic study. We assumed that those parking spots were being used, we assumed, you know, out of capacity building, the number of trips, and obviously that could fluctuate.
Right.
You know, but again, we, we can provide the information, but on the outcome, when they say one and a half cars per unit or less, there's no way for me to count that ahead of time.
Right.
You know, for you, I can just provide the information on what, and what we're seeing, generally speaking, these type of developments.
Right, so then my next set of questions are based on, you're asking to have forty percent maximum coverage over that.
Yes.
What is it currently?
Nick?
The current?
You're talking about the building.
The buildings, what's the current building coverage?
I mean, if I had to guess, it's half of what we're proposing.
Okay, so twenty percent.
Just off, off, off cuff of what is there.
Okay, but yet it's almost a hundred percent right now impervious surface.
Oh, yeah.
There's no green space there currently.
It's paved.
So by you saying you have eighty percent coverage, that's actually less than what is there currently.
We are reducing and improving the impervious situation as it exists today.
And the.
We are increasing the building coverage, I would argue that we are going to be able to improve the flow of water through Karen and Nick by being able to direct certain units to certain corners, where this entire parcel now slopes from Elm to the left-hand corner of Poplar. So I, you know, again, improving the water situation, improving the impervious situation, uh, improving the parking situation, the trips and travels. The cost of doing so is the twenty-one units.
So you're obviously investing in the community.
I love God, Jack, my businesses are here, we're looking at buying a building here, uh, you know, we have a lot of employees that work here. I build in Colonial School District, right, Plymouth Meeting, Plymouth White Marsh, Upper Marion, Radnor, Lower Marion, downtown, all of these areas. I would like to think that I am sensitive and considerate to trying to put forth the best product possible, you know, for, for each parcel. This capital investment into the community will cost us in excess of ten million to do this, this particular project.
So one of the things I think we all need to start thinking about specifically with this, you know, the size of this, we've got London Berry, we've got Riverwalk, and then we're going to have this new train station that's up the tracks. I think we need to start thinking creatively, because we're worried about parking, parking, parking. But perhaps there's a way that, um, as we start getting more sophisticated, that there could be shuttle service for these facilities to get to the train station, where in bad weather, they're not jumping in their car and driving up to the train station, those kinds of things. So that, that's what I would like, as if, since you're investing in the community. To help us try and figure those kinds of things out as.
So I, I will tell you which other municipalities. So, I will tell you which other municipalities are doing with some of these developments, especially when we're installing these scissor lifts. So, the scissor lift would go to the unit as the two-car parking. And then what you would have near Poplar or Elm designated spaces for takeout vehicles, Uber vehicles, charging centers for people with energy-efficient cars. Again, we have to exceed our parking requirement to do so, but it gives locations for individuals to come off of Elm Street, pulling into our building, park, right, without impacting the one flow of traffic. And the Uber spots are very popular, especially today, for that exact reason, to and from, you know, locations of public transportation, restaurants, things of that nature.
Because the reality is, the people that are buying these types of units are the people that are basically shuttling, taking the train into town. For the most part, yes. So, I just think that that's the way we've got to start thinking as we redevelop down that, that area, because all these projects that are out there are going to look like this as we move forward.
Right.
And then we'll also bring up, you know, something we had spoken with Ray about, which was a very good question. This project will not be constructed concurrently with the Hector Street project. So, the concern was having two major developments going on at the same time.
Impacting the same roads.
Everything that we're gonna be doing. We will be making a concerted effort on the Hector Street project and this particular project, take our construction vehicles down the Elm Street side, staying off the Hector Street side as much as possible. We will also be attempting to load and offload our site with materials in off-peak hours, not the rush hour in the morning or the rush hour in the afternoon.
Ray, regarding the authority on Elm Street, is there a way for us to designate parking for those that work there so that they're guaranteed a place to park?
They already have it.
They already have it?
We already have some, we did a ordinance.
Right.
Okay.
We did a ordinance about a year ago.
A year ago, okay.
Right.
To include some more parking on Elm Street.
Okay.
To include some more parking on Elm Street. So, there's parking for borough vehicles for the Public Works Department and for sewer authority, and that's what the gym owner was referring to.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that reminder.
So, my only concern is I'm going to back to green space. I do understand that you're putting, what is it, twenty to twenty-one?
Twenty-one units.
Okay, and I understand your reasoning for that. I, I get it.
Yep.
The more you put in, the.
It's not necessarily, it's a misnomer to think that it's the more that we put into a unit. It's never, from a developer's standpoint, it is never the idea to get the most of anything. We want to find the basic financial viability of something, to sell the lowest price unit we can with the most desirable product, right? So, if I say these are gonna go for five-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand, and you say, okay, we don't want twenty-one, we want twenty, we want nineteen, we want eighteen, price of the house changes. It has to go up to offset the financial viability. So, then we try to make it determinational if we think we can sell those units, okay? Second aspect of that is attempting to reduce to get additional green space outside of the two-thousand feet. If I said five feet, let's say, five feet on the Elm Street side, you eliminate all of those parking spots. They're no longer possible due to the design of this site. Small street trees, landscape planners, buffering, flower boxes, that can all be done to soften the appearance of the building. Happy to pay for or donate trees or services to parks or other aspects of the community. But these type of sites, which are one-hundred percent impervious, high-density areas, similar to a city environment, extremely challenging to try to get thirty street trees. I mean, it just, it's not, not possible.
But can we put in the agreement that, that the planters and the boxes, that that is.
Absolutely.
Part of the project so that.
Absolutely. We can incorporate that into our HOA documents.
Yeah.
Mike and Ed, Eric on that, there's definitely language that can be done there where it can be enforced. The HOA can be enforced to maintain the appearance of the building. I mean, we could put very specific landscape packages in where the change is by season, you know, and in the fall, you get corn stalks, mungs, and cabbages, right?
Right.
You can write in any of those things to soften the appearance of the building. And those kind of things are very viable from a financial standpoint. They cost us more money than a street tree, but it's something that's able to be done.
Right.
You know, versus nothing.
And then I would ask the same for the pedestrian lighting. Because that's going to be a very walkable area, and I'm sure many of the people that buy there will be attracted to the trails and to all the restaurants, so.
They had mentioned earlier some of the lighting that goes up and down that you see on these type of buildings. They would illuminate the sidewalk.
Right.
And illuminate the top of the building. They're low-impact, they won't, they don't affect the neighbors in the surrounding area. We can absolutely incorporate in our lighting plan and design of the building.
Okay.
All of those things. Look, I want a beautiful building.
Of course, of course.
You know.
Sounds great.
Adding all those things will be, are all great points.
So, and my concern on this is, as ridiculous or as crazy as this is going to sound with the green spaces, I understand that it's for, you know, mostly will be single people, but in Conshohocken, eighteen out of those twenty single people are gonna have a dog.
Yeah.
It's just the way it is in Conshohocken.
That's why we incorporated in the back of the building that specific dog.
That's why I'm asking about the green space.
We're trying to be.
Is it that green space?
It has two-thousand feet.
Yeah, two-thousand feet. Where you can take your dog, if the dog has to go to the bathroom, versus taking it out to Poplar or Elm. The thought was directly related to.
That's something I don't want to go on to the residents again. I mean, they have enough problems with dogs with another twenty coming.
I've got four of them.
Good point.
That's, and the park across the street is not for the dog, it's for the children, so.
Oh, one-hundred percent.
Yes, so that's one of my concerns. When we do developments like this, we're, we are learning because we have.
Right, things have changed.
Londonbury and all those, and none of that was ever taken into consideration.
It always flows downhill.
And it, it's right back.
Yeah.
Yes, so.
All very, very good points. And I think you will inevitably see these type of developments coming down the line, because this is the exact type of development that happens with commercial properties, right, that are what Hector Street is, what this is. You know exactly the property I'm talking about. They're scattered intermittently all down here. I think everybody would agree that pride and ownership and residence are more beneficial than these commercial properties, you know, for tenants.
How much space is in between the outside perimeter condos and the interior ones?
Are you talking about the, on my airwalk from unit to unit?
Yeah, in the.
That looks like the center court area.
Right, so you have the outside, then you have these, then you have the lobby.
So, I don't have that direct information, but being able to just look and scale the units, on Hector, we were looking for fourteen feet. I would venture to guess that we're very similar in that dynamic, idea being that we want people to be able to sit out on the airwalk, right? Plant, that's essentially your living room or deck. You have your rooftop deck, but the idea is that you open your doors, you have a patio set, and then there's enough room in between for a walk aisle.
Okay.
And then there's a lot more room, you know, where our lobby comes up to the main tower.
Okay. And that will actually have, like, landscaping?
We will have, we will have planners.
In glass?
Mixed throughout. We will have lamps or lanterns and lighting, very similar to the Hector Street project. Our proposal in coming in here today was, you know, to present an idea of what we want to develop. You know, I don't have to tell you that this is a significant capital investment for us to attempt to engineer, design, architect, the fees and everything associated, just to get to the board of supervisors for approval. This plan will evolve.
Okay.
Okay, as we go through the land development process, specific to Karen, had a lot of great points about two dead ends and parking. That's where we decided to integrate the scissor lifts to increase our parking with the assumption that it's very possible we lose one or two spaces based on turning radiuses and things of that nature. We will, as we get towards the end, come up with another rendering, photo realism, showing the planners, the boxes, a landscape plan, all of that as we go through land development. You know, we'll gather and garner a significant amount of additional information. We will take into consideration all of your feedback that has been in Hector. We will implement that in our initial land development for this project, so that when we come back in front of you, you know, we want to show that we're listening and taking the advice in trying to improve the building.
I have a question about this two-thousand-foot piece. Are you gonna fence that in so it's only for the residents there?
So, it's basically surrounded on most sides right now by other commercial buildings.
Okay.
We could fence off any opening, let's say, to the trolley or train side, with something decorative to make sure that it was utilized for residents only. And even from a safety measure, that stops access to our parking garage from a rear entry point, you know, versus the two on Elman-Poplar. So, that's a very good point.
Anyone else have any questions?
So, what we're gonna have to do is, just like Hector Street, first, we need to go to the zoning board for some zoning relief. Then we'll come back to council with land development and a conditional use for the height. We want to make sure that council is generally on board with it before we get to the zoning board.
What I would like council to discuss does not have to be a decision tonight. So, the way the conditional use works is if I'm one foot over or twenty feet over, it's conditional use, right? I do think that increasing the building on the Elm Street side by that five feet will not significantly impact the visual of the surrounding area. However, it does give you a significant opportunity to increase the parking, should individuals be adding these scissor lifts. We will meet the parking requirement either way. It is simply food for thought for future use. You do not get the opportunity in the future to raise that deck, that additional five feet. I think it would be, I mean, it costs me significantly more money to put in, put in these lifts. I mean, they're not inexpensive in any capacity. We're raising the building to five feet. I'm not gaining units or value in any capacity. I do, however, think the opportunity to possibly add additional parking would be beneficial in the future.
Thank you for forward-thinking.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
I don't have positive meetings in here when we come back.
Everyone, no more questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming in.
Appreciate it.
I'm gonna get out of the office after five and a half months.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening. The next item on the agenda is council member and mayor matters. The next item is borough special events for the remainder of the fiscal year 2020. Vice President Sokolowski?
Thank you. So, I wanted this opportunity to talk with council to really look at where we're at in the pandemic and the idea that we have not really been able to have many of our special events based on the requirements for social distancing and other pandemic requirements for group gatherings. As we come into the season where we do a lot of public events, the idea that I'm thinking is, can we work with our administration to look at other ways? And this is kind of for our discussion, to see if you guys are all on the same page, but can we look at other ways to provide events to our community that may not be in-person large gatherings, but give our residents some activities for the children during this, these times? And so, I think the creativity could come from our administrative team and the different events committees, Kate and Lauren and Ray and Stephanie and everyone could work together. But I wanted to know if you guys also thought that that was an idea that we should explore? Because I don't think that canceling everything at a hundred percent as we continue through the pandemic, because it's not going anywhere anytime soon, is what, what can we do to continue to engage the community?
Right.
And provide services.
And even some of the, even some of the events that we normally have, how we could do them differently to keep everyone safe.
Right.
I mean, we have a lot of events that normally are coming up that, that we won't be able to have in a traditional way. Halloween's coming up, the holidays are coming up. So, we're gonna need to, like, come together and find ways to have some events for our residents and the kids while keeping them safe.
Right.
So, it's really looking at non-traditional, new ways of engaging the community and still being able to celebrate the different holidays, because that's what we do really well here.
Right.
Just as an example, in June, we had to restructure the car show and arts festival. We brought it all online, and we had eleven hours of music that artists did from their living rooms.
Right.
We broadcast them on Facebook and through our website, and it was something. It was something to tune into, something to bring us together. And we even had artists link into our website so residents could buy their goods, so.
Were you able to capture any analytics on that from?
I'm sure Sarah has that. I have no doubt. I can have her talk to you about that.
Yeah, it would be interesting to see the analytics of, you know.
I'm sure she can pull that up.
How many people actually popped in and out?
Yep.
And I know Ms. Lorraine has done some really creative things for children at the library. So, she has done her actual story hours for different age groups, but then they do different activities, and they leave activity kits on the porch. So, possibly for our holidays, that's what we could do. I know for the Winter Wonderland, Lauren always has amazing craft ideas.
Right.
But she would, you know, people call in and say they're coming to pick them up, and you have a set time, so it's not fifty people descending on the steps of Borough Hall at the same time. So, she might be a very good resource for us working with the children. I guess my bigger concern is our seniors. That's gonna be a true challenge, because most of them are not comfortable with Zoom or even Facebook, many of them. So, that's where, if we could find a resource, how to reach out and involve our seniors, maybe again through Colonial Neighborhood Council and the Meals on Wheels, we could get activities to drop to them when their meals are delivered, because they would, they have the list of people.
Right.
So, maybe we could help out with that.
So, so we have our television, television channel, so wouldn't it be interesting to see if, you know, for, even for seniors, so they can take, potentially take pictures of activities that we might be dropping off? And then we post them on the TV where, you know, we can have music behind it, and it feels like, you know, we're interacting in some way, shape, or form with each other.
Because we don't utilize the television much at all, and it's a very comfortable medium for the seniors. They're very comfortable with that.
So, is that something that we would all feel comfortable asking our administrative team?
Right.
With not a whole lot of time to start getting creative?
Halloween, Halloween's like two months.
You know, is. Ray, do you have?
See what you started?
I know.
They may have already been working on it. My guess is.
So, yes, there's, we definitely think that that is something that I think for, not only for the community, but I think for the morale of the administration, it would be something very, very good and very useful. It is going to be a very unique, more than six months probably, and I think something like that would be very helpful. We have discussions. Some of them you've just brought up, some of the ideas. We have very creative people that work for the administration staff, and they have, they have brought up some pretty good ideas. We've kind of touched on everything that you just discussed. Marshalle Towers being one of the things that we would want to look into. It's difficult, because you're really not allowed in there, but what can we do? So, we're going to look into that. Um, so we're going to look into that, uh, but we're going to look throughout our demographics. So there's going to be something for kids, um, something for the parents of the kids, something for the parents. Um, and, uh, hopefully we can make some of this work, but, you know, the, the mayor, uh, he's a very good resource, great resource for his knowledge on, on, uh, social media.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and we have maybe an underused television channel that we, uh, that we've looked at. Um, and we have the newsletter. Uh, we have a fire chief who's very excited about doing, uh, some TV time and talks about things like, uh, smoke detectors and other, uh, other things. And, uh, we, we have a very shy police chief that I'm sure will not have a job with doing any of that either. So I think we have a good group of people that can move forward with it. This is a good time to experiment and I don't think there's any harm in it as long as, uh, we have the blessing of the council.
Absolutely.
And honestly, Ray, you know, I know we're talking about everybody, but when Jane hit on the seniors, you, you know, this, it, it's affected our seniors the hardest.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I know the, the ones that came to the community center all the time for all the events, every week they did the bingo, they did the exercise, they're calling continually now, like, when are our, our exercise classes starting again? When is bingo starting again? And, you know, we have to tell them no, so anything creative that we can really come up for them, because the fall and winter months are going to be the hardest on them. It, more than anybody else, I think.
I think so too.
So Mayor, you did a virtual bingo recently.
Yep.
And it was probably done on Zoom or one of those platforms, but Zoom has just call-in, dial-in.
Yep.
So you could just, you don't even need to be the face, you could listen and as they call the numbers, we could figure, potentially figure something like that out? I mean, it, you know, the seniors are looking for.
Activities.
Activities.
Yes, to keep them going, yeah.
But, you know, is that an, uh, an alternative?
It may be with actually whoever, who ran the bingo?
Oh, was Pat Bar from West Country Hocken.
You know, maybe that's somebody that we could reach out to for that, to see if that's something that.
To help support that.
Right, yeah.
Right, she would have all the contacts.
Yeah.
And I do want to make, the, the one thing we haven't talked to is the council about this, because I think there's, there's definitely, I mean, you each represent a ward and, and all of your wards have different.
Different needs, yeah.
Different needs, different demographics, um, and you know better than anybody what that is, so.
Right.
Um, PSAs are something that we've talked about. There's no reason that we couldn't have a council person participate in something like that.
Mm-hmm.
We have a parks program that PSAs will be helpful for, the fire prevention. The police have several members on the police department that, um, that are used to talking in front of cameras and trained to do it. Uh, emergency management, we've talked, talked to Sergeant Lennon, he's going to do some PSAs for the emergency management part. So I think we want to cover all the bases, have something good to present, uh, to council at some point, uh, i- if, if you want us to continue with that and, um, and then put it out there. I mean, I honestly don't see any harm in any of it and I think, uh, it will be very useful in some cases.
Okay. Everyone in agreement on that?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Ray.
Okay.
And we have money in the budget because we've canceled so many events.
Yeah, I, I want to get away from that negative feeling of canceling everything and trying to start fostering a, we're, you know, a positive.
Positive, right.
We're.
We can do it.
We can do it and we're going to get on the other side of this.
Mm-hmm.
Get through the next couple of months. Okay, does anyone else have anything to add? Okay. So we will go to council and Mayor Matters, starting with Mayor Aronson.
Okay. Now, take off the masks since, uh, no one can hear me last time. Uh, so not this Saturday, but next Saturday, the twelfth, the, um, police department is putting on our yearly shredding event. That's going to be at Caldwell Banker on, uh, Twelfth and Fayette. Um, we're also doing something new this year. We're collecting, uh, electronics for recycling. So, um, it's free, it's going to be contactless. Uh, we ask that everyone pull up, have everything in their trunk, and then we will, uh, take all items out. It's going to be from nine AM to one PM. And, uh, a big thank you to Detective Walter, who did a lot of the legwork to, uh, help me put this together. Um, we expect a pretty good turnout since everyone did all their, uh, pandemic cleaning this year, so, so it should be a popular one. Um, and then my second thing is, uh, I just want to reiterate to residents, um, there's a lot of yard signs out there, um, and I'm guilty of providing some of them. Um, but for non-political signs, uh, we do have an ordinance that says you can't have signs between the street curb and the sidewalk. Um, and that is for aesthetic, trash, and safety reasons. Um, so we have been enforcing that, um, so our staff will politely, uh, professionally ask that you, uh, you know, relocate a sign that, that may be in that area. Um, and if there's any questions, you can always call our borough administration and they can, uh, walk you through what that ordinance says. And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Stogel?
I have a few questions for Ray, but I can talk to him more about it, but one question I have is, what's going on with the road program?
Yeah.
So Liquid Fuels Road Program?
Yes.
So, um, we have a project going on right now, um, that's still going on, uh, at Ethan Wells, that's part of the road program. But because of COVID, it has, uh, we've had a lot of problems with that. Um, our, the, the, that particular project, one of the problems is that, uh, we have to, they had to relocate gas lines. And in order to do that, they have to get into people's homes. Pico's had a policy that they were not going to do that during the COVID period, they, when we were in the red, red phase?
Right.
I kind of forget that. We were in the red phase. When it turned to green, they were kind of doing it, um, but you, they had, the people had to sign off. All these things came into play. Right now, um, we're pretty close to getting most of the people on that street to agree to let the Pico in to do that. But when we have these situations, we discover problems. And we have a couple residential problems that we did not know we had until we made these inquiries. Now we have to resolve those before Pico can go in, take, do what they need to do, and we can continue the road program. So the road programs are out there, but, you know, we have the COVID thing and we also have the, the dollars thing.
I just don't see no movement, that's all.
Yeah, it's two hundred, to, to do an intersection like that and to do it right and, you know, have Karen design it to make sure everything's done correctly and we have a drainage issues taken care of, you're talking a quarter of a million dollars or more.
Right.
And, you know, we don't have the munis- the size of a municipality that's required to, to gain a lot of money for that. Our, our road miles are seventeen and a half or seventeen point nine. We don't get a lot of, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is not a lot of money to do that kind of work.
Right.
Um, so the road cre- road programs in the past have been mill and overlay. Everybody knows what that is. They come over and they scrape the top and they overlay it. Uh, I think from some of the work that's Karen, Karen's done in the past, when we try to do a comprehensive analysis of the entire borough and the requirements that the roads have, are, are going to have in the future, uh, Karen made a pretty unique discovery that the milling and overlay was not enough, that we have problems underneath those old sections of roadway that cost a huge amount of money to address.
Well, we knew that years ago. It's all about, all about the money.
And we, we're, we're talking about a difference of doing it right for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars or milling and overlaying it for a hundred thousand dollars. Um, but we still have a problem after we put the hundred thousand dollars into it, because at any time, what's underneath can give way. We have an example of Springville Avenue, which wasn't done very long ago. I mean, I live on Springville Avenue, I'm very familiar with what's going on, but, um, they did exactly what they were supposed to do, um, but it was a mill and overlay in a few sections and that mill and overlay is now gone. So what was a perfect roadway, we're going to have to figure out how to redo it again. They did twenty-two hundred and eighty square feet, um, of, of mill and overlay there, um, and probably a third of that is now problematic, needs to be replaced. So I think the objective in the future, we'll have to figure out how to do it right and figure out how to fund that. And I don't, I don't think that the only way to fund it and the only way to do it right will be Liquid Fuels money. There's going to have to be a substantial investment from the municipality, uh, at some point to make those changes. And, um, I don't know what council that's going to be, whether it's going to be this council or a council in the future, but i- i- it's, it's, everything, e- e- every time period has an end to it and the time period for just moving along slowly with the road programs is gone. We have some major, major problems down the future that we're going to have to address. And I'm not talking about twenty years from now, I'm talking about in the near future. I think that's not a surprise to anybody in there.
You got to understand, you're talking about a new era here, talking about more cars and this guy was just here.
Yep.
He's, uh, uh, he must be a magician. I don't, I only know one person in my life that don't have a car. He's saying a lot of people don't have cars. I don't know where he gets that from. And there's only going to be two people living in apartments?
It could be three or four.
He's putting a lot of.
I will tell you this, that I think Mike can attest to this and anybody that's been in some of the meetings with the current developers, e- e- the, the businesses or the residential developers. Um, that's the way everybody's kind of leaning. So we've actually had discussions in the borough of Country Hocken about non-driverless vehicles and about what the requirements and needs for non-driverless vehicles are going to be five years from now. Whether you're going to have your car drive you to work and hit a button and send your car back to the house and come to pick you up two, two hours later, or three hours later. So that's already in the discussion, that's in the, you know, it's not just electric cars, there's plenty of other things out there. And we, because of our situation, we might be at the forefront of some of that.
But it's still wear and tear on the roads.
It is, it is, there's no doubt about it, there's wear and tear on the roads. It's not, I'm not saying it's going to get better. We have a lot of truck traffic through town, we have a state highway, you know, going through the middle of town. Some of this construction has taken a toll on the roads in the borough of Country Hocken. There's no doubt about it. Um, but again, I don't think that simply doing the mill and overlays of the past are what we need to look at for the future. We really have to reconstruct, and I think Karen would agree, from what she has learned about our roads recently, that, um, there are some reconstruction, complete reconstruction of roads in this town that are going to be needed in the near future. How that gets funded, that's going to be somewhat up to me, but mostly up to you guys.
So didn't she come up with an estimate for thirty million?
Yeah, thirty, thirty-two million.
For the whole borough.
So where did she get that?
I think Karen's still on the.
She did a study.
Every time she says that number, she, she cringes, but.
Karen, yeah, they did an extensive study, it took months.
Yeah, I know they did, I know.
Yeah, thirty million dollars is a lot of money.
Yeah.
Um, it may not be a lot of money for the city of Philadelphia, but it's a lot of money for the borough of Country Hocken to make that kind of capital investment in a right way.
So Bob, and, and you'll remember the last, before the pandemic hit, the, the whole year before that is something council has been discussing is how to fund the road program. I mean, it, it's not something that went away. We still are trying to figure out how to fund it.
And it might be difficult decisions that one of these councils has to make.
That's right. It has to be done.
But it has to get done.
Your roads are going to cave in.
Yep.
I think the only other thing from my perspective, COVID has thrown, obviously among your, and to everything, but, um, the other issue is, we don't really want to do a lot of road work replacement during this period of time where these construction vehicles are still doing this major construction. We are going to have a lower end of town that is going to look substantially different than it did two years ago. Um, and that's all going to probably start to take hold in the next eighteen months. If you have not been in Country Hocken for four years and you drive through here in 2022, you're going to have a different experience. Uh, so I don't think that right now is the time, maybe not this year or right now is the time, with all the uncertainty to.
Right.
To, to start worrying about that, but it should be in the back of everybody's mind that this is coming up and it's maybe one, it may be the major project for this borough for the next twenty years, that, that this has to happen and, um, and maybe it should have happened years ago, but you can't worry about that, you have to worry about what's going on for a future.
Thank you.
Ms. Flanagan?
Uh, yes, I'd want to announce that we had a wonderful event the other day. The Borough of Country Hocken Sewer Authority made a thousand dollar donation to Colonial Neighborhood Council and that was in part of the Country Strong Initiative. And the Borough Authority of the sewer plant has a strong community commitment. They also make donations to the Country Hocken Little League and to the Community Garden every year, so.
So there's your thirty million.
From the sewer.
Vice President Sokolowski?
Uh, just want to remind people that we're coming into flu season and we encourage everyone to get their flu shots based on, um, the pandemic and not knowing the difference between flu and COVID, it's really important to get your flu shots this year.
Got my flu shot.
Ms. Brittany?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have anything, thank you.
Mr. Griffin?
I have nothing.
Chief Metz?
I have, in the future, I'm going to do the Jones.
Okay. Uh, Ms., Brittany, do we have any public?
No, we do not have any public comment.
And I, I did forget, Mr. Tino, do you have anything?
No, I do not, thank you.
You're welcome. With that, I will say, meeting adjourned.